Okay, everybody, this is Elizabeth Clarkin. Ms. Clarkin, this is everybody.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so the matter of side data Mandier Incorporated docket number ZBA 1900037, preliminary and final major site plan with C and D variances in which applicant wants to construct a 20,970 square foot place of worship at 583 South Middlebush Road Somerset Block 36.01, Lot 6.03, Inzone A. This matter has been carried to September 9, 2021. This will be an in-person meeting held in the council chambers in the Franklin Township Municipal Building at 475 Demont Lane Somerset, New Jersey at 7:30 PM. Cedarville Holdings LLC docket number ZBA 1900041. Applicant is seeking a D variance to allow operation of a summer camp at 152 Cedar Grove Lane Somerset, Lot 424.12, Lot 6.03 in R40 Zone. This matter has been carried to September 2, 2021. This will also be an in-person meeting held in the council chambers at Franklin Township Municipal Building at 475 Demont Lane Somerset, New Jersey at 7:30 PM. Anybody that wants to report this meeting, it's going to be in person. If you need any other information, please contact me, Christine Woodbury. My phone number is 732-873-2500 and my extension is 6271. And I just think it bears notice to let you know that the virtual meeting for August 5 is going to be virtual. If anybody's listening, that matter, all matters for August 5 will be held virtually. Okay, Mr. Thomas, take it away.
Okay, thank you. And in case you haven't heard or it hasn't registered beginning in September, we'll be back in person barring any other health setbacks for the area. Okay, meetings, minutes, regular meeting, May 20th. We need a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, another set of minutes, regular meeting, June 17, 2021. We need a motion and a second.
I will, Gary.
I'll second.
Gary and Cheryl again. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, moving into the first hearing, Tony.
No, you have, you have a resolution.
Resolution, I got it. Hamilton Street Management Resolution, sorry, I overlooked it. ZBA 2000023. Need a motion and a second.
Move.
I'll second.
Second, I'm sorry. Who first and second, I'm sorry. Gary, you first it?
No, I did. Bob Shepherd.
Oh, Bob Shepherd, thank you, okay.
And Gary.
And then Gary, okay. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
That's, okay, moving on to hearings. Tony and Nicole Hubbard, ZBA 2100013. C variance in which the applicant's requesting to set up a pool in the backyard F427 West Point Avenue Somerset Block 348, Lot 32 in the R15 Zone, carried from July 1 because we needed a newspaper notice. Do we have everybody or can we bring everybody into the meeting for that?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, just real quick before we get to this hearing, and I'll provide a quick summary of this when we get there. I just wanted to provide a little bit more clarification on the hearing issue just so the board is aware and the public, the reason why the meeting on August 5 is still virtual is that certain meetings or hearings that were carried to that date virtually. So we can't just, once a hearing is ongoing and changed and carried to a virtual meeting, we can't just have it live because then the public has not been properly noticed. So that's why, again, kind of the ongoing hearings tonight and on the 5th, how to be virtual. We're also going to, Christine, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to have to adopt a meeting schedule on the 5th? Yeah, so we're going to give you a resolution. If you recall, at the beginning of every year, you would, you adopt a, a meeting schedule for the year. We have to essentially kind of restart the clock and have a meeting schedule that you have to adopt by resolution for September, October, November, December, saying that, you know, the dates and it's 7:30 at the municipal building, et cetera. So we have to do that again. So you'll have that resolution for the 5th. Moving on to the application, I did bring in Nicole Hubbard, who's the applicant. Just a quick background on some of these homeowner applications, I provide a background for the board. The applicant wants to place a 24-foot round above ground pool in their backyard. They have a very long but very narrow property, 40 feet in width. The required setback is 10 feet. And putting a 24-foot round pool in a 40-foot backyard, 40-foot wide backyard, their setbacks are only eight feet where 10-foot would be required. So those, that is the nature of the variances.
Okay, do they have a representative or they?
Ms. Hubbard is, is in there somewhere. I think she needs to bring, activate her, her video.
Video, yeah, I see her name, but I don't see her. Ms. Hubbard, if you can hear me, if you can go to the bottom, this tab's on the bottom, the second tab over where it says stop or start video, if you could please start your video so that you can appear on the screen, we'd appreciate it. There she is. Hi, Ms. Hubbard. Ms. Hubbard?
She's not muted.
Hubbard, can you hear me?
Are we able to hear her at least?
She's not muted, but I don't hear her saying anything. We do. Ms. Hubbard? I think she's... Hold on a minute, let me... Okay. Ms. Hubbard, say something, please.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, people, board members, I'm sorry. I have Mrs. Hubbard on my phone. She's having difficulty connecting audio-wise. But Mr. Reagan, you can see her and you can talk with her and you all, you all can hear her through my phone, correct? Yes, okay. So, Mrs. Hubbard, we're going to have to do it this way so we can move ahead with the meeting. So we can see you and you were talking to the board through your phone. So just keep your phone to the side and then Mr. Reagan would like to swear you in, please.
Yeah, Mrs. Hubbard, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. If you, you can proceed.
Okay, Mrs. Hubbard, would you just give us a brief overview of what you're, what you want to do? It's putting in an above-ground pool, correct?
I'm gonna let my husband tell me.
Okay, he needs to be sworn in then. He needs to be sworn.
Well, we're putting a 24-inch pool in our, 24-foot pool in our backyard. And we, I'm sorry, that's why I said that you're supposed to tell him this is a conference. This conference is 24 feet.
And because your yard is so narrow, moving it one way or the other won't change the variances because there's simply not enough space. Is there any thought to having a smaller pool?
No, because the pool was purchased back in March of 2020. So it hasn't been installed yet. It's just sitting in our front yard.
Any, any people, any board members have questions? Can we open it up and see if there are any neighbors that have anything to say?
No, I do not see any members of the public with any questions.
Okay, I, I'll...
I just have one question. So is the only issue, the side yard setbacks? Is that the only issue with the, with the pool?
Yes, the requirement is 10 feet and the setbacks would be eight.
And this is surrounded by a six-foot fence, I believe I read? Six-foot wooden fence? The yard?
I think Ms. Hubbard just confirmed that it is.
Yes.
Okay, so...
The fence, the fence.
Okay, so it's not readily visible to the neighbors? Is there?
I'm sorry, it's not... My husband wants to be sworn in.
Sure. Mr. Hubbard, if, if, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
So, on one side, I mean, because I hear the fence. But on one side, with wooden fences, you see, the fence is actually a foot off of property. So it's not directly on the property line. So on one side...
Can you all hear?
No, can you, can you?
On the other side, we have to, because they set the fence, I'll put the property on.
Can everybody hear him or no?
No, no.
Mr. Hubbard, you have to talk into the phone.
No, we can't hear him.
Mr. Hubbard, if you can hear me, the board members had difficulty hearing you. If you could talk into the phone, please?
Yeah, so the bottom line again is one side, where the white fence is, I don't know if you guys have a picture, there's the two-foot span there. On the other side, where the wooden fence is, they actually, when they erected that fence, they didn't put it directly on the property line. They set it back a foot. So actually, we have three feet on that side.
Did everybody hear him okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me take a different direction. Is there anybody on the board who needs to have more information to act on this? We have a pool with two setbacks, side yard setbacks. The knee variances because the lot is narrow. The pool was purchased a long, a number of months ago. So although a smaller pool might be an option, this applicant has apparently, according to testimony, got the 24-foot one and paid for it. It's relatively invisible from the neighbors who are not here to say anything about it. Now, is there anyone who has, who needs anything else for this? Or would like to offer a motion? I will. I, I move that we grant Tony and Nicole Hubbard a, a C variance to, for the side yard setbacks for their property at 427 West Point Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey, to allow them to install a 24-foot pool in their backyard.
I'll second.
If there's no...
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokranik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, good luck with the pool. The next hearing, Trinity Rehab, ZBA 210012. Sign variance in which the applicant wants to place a 28-foot, point 75 square foot sign within the shopping center at 1165 Route 27 Somerset, Lot 88.01, Lot 43 in the GB zone. And I guess we can bring in all the participants in that application.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Getty Von?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I've got you. I don't know about everybody else, but...
Yes.
My name is Andrew Kohut, K-O-H-U-T. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Wells Jaworski and Liebman in Paramus, New Jersey, 12 Route 17 North in Paramus. I'm here on behalf of Trinity Rehab. As Mr. Chairman indicated, it's, they are a tenant at the, at the shopping center at Block 8801, Lot 43, which is in the GB zone. The Trinity Rehab currently is a tenant. They currently have a sign. However, due to the orientation of the building and where they are located in the building, they, they don't have very good visibility from the road. They, on a number of, on many occasions, they've had patients who have said we had, you know, extremely, extremely difficult finding the, the, the tenant space. So what they want to do is they want to put up a second sign on the portion of the, on the other elevation of the front on Veronica's, Veronica Street. In doing so, they wanted to keep within the municipality zoning code as much as possible. So they are proposing a 28.75 square foot sign where not customarily 30 square feet is permitted. So they want to stay consistent with the code. Since the, the, the issue is, is that the elevation they are putting, the portion of the elevation they are putting the sign on is not part of their dedicated tenant space. So they'll need a variance for that. You will hear test, who I have testify here is Ms. Christine Nazaro-Cafone. She's a licensed planner who is prepared to go through the application and justify the, the relief being sought. Unless the board has any questions of, with anything I just said, I'd like to call Ms. Nazaro-Cafone up to testify.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Ms. Nazaro-Cafone. How are you? You're, you're on mute.
We can't hear her.
Yeah, we still can't hear you. The wonders of technology.
Andrew, if you want to text me her, her number, maybe we have to do the same thing we just did with the Hubbard so that...
I don't know if I, I don't know if I have her phone, her cellphone.
Christine, can you hear me? Just shake your head if you can hear me. Call me on the number I gave you at the trial run, please, so that we can put you on speaker, the same thing I had to do with Ms. Hubbard. Hello, Christine, can you hear me? Okay, just allow me to put the phone close so Mr. Reagan can swear you in and make sure that the board members can hear you.
Yes, yes.
Can you raise your right hand, Ms. Cafone? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Christine, for the, for the board's edification, for the board's edification, can you just provide them with your educational and professional background?
Yes, are you getting a lot of heat down?
Yeah, do you, can you hit the mute on your laptop? Because even though we can't hear you, you must have unmuted it. All right, let me hang up then. Maybe we can hear you. Go ahead and speak now. Maybe we can hear you. That's why it's echoing. No. All right, may I, can we ask that you maybe get out and come back in?
Yeah.
Because if you're going to be echoing on the phone, that's not good for us to hear.
That's it. Who's ready for in-person meetings?
At least we're not missing the Yankee game tonight.
We'll only have car trouble to blame. Can't make a meeting.
They're not playing as well as postponed.
Yeah, they canceled the game. There was, the Yankees had a COVID outbreak.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you.
Oh, good, you do, okay. Yay. I don't know what...
Yeah, we can, we can see and hear you now. Okay, allow Mr. Reagan to swear you in, please. Thanks.
Oh, my God, really?
I'm fine. I was muted. You swear? You swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, and I'm very thankful that I kept it clean when I was super frustrated. So, yes, thank you. So that was easy. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazaro-Cafone, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified here as an expert in Franklin in excess of over 450 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. So I have testified quite a few times on applications similar to this.
I'll accept her qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christine, are you familiar with the application and the application materials?
I am familiar with the application, the application submission documents, the TRC review letter that was prepared by your professionals, as well as the master plan and the zoning ordinance here in Franklin.
You, you, you beat me to the punch. So then why don't you go through with the board what's being proposed and discuss, discuss the variances and the justifications for, for those, for them?
So quite simply, what is being proposed is that we are proposing what would be a second sign on the existing center in the township's GB general business zone. And as Mr. Kohut indicated, the, in the genesis or the motivation for this application was because we have customers or clients who are struggling to find the, the center. And as, as the board well knows this center, I'm sure, you know that we have frontage on Route 27, we have frontage on Veronica Avenue, and then we have our access, which is sort of internal to the shopping center and looking at the other commercial strip mall. So while we are permitted only one sign over our entrance, we really have what I would consider really three frontages of the subject property. So regardless, the zoning allows us only one sign over our primary entrance. And we are seeking to have not only a secondary sign, but a secondary sign over where it is not located as an entrance to the building. As Mr. Kohut also indicated, 30 square feet is what we would be permitted to have by ordinance. And we're proposing a sign of 28.75 feet. And that was important to us as a team is because we wanted to make sure that the sign and the, the scale of the sign was appropriately scaled to the building that it sits on. We submitted in conjunction with this application two photographs of the subject property indicating the existing signage at the center, as well as the proposed sign that is being proposed by Trinity Rehab. Those signs are accurately depicted in the June 7, 2021 review letter of this application. But I could go ahead and share them if the board feels as though they need to see them again. But I can submit to the board that they are as proposed in that letter. But I'm happy to share my screen and show them. I believe the board can grant the variance relief that's required in conjunction with this application under the C1 and C2 statutory criteria. The C1 really talks about unique site feature impacting a specific piece of the property. And I think with the fact that we have the frontage on Veronica, the frontage on 20... I believe the board can grant the variance relief that's required in conjunction with this application under the C1 and C2 statutory criteria. The C1 really talks about unique site feature impacting a specific piece of the property, and I think with the fact that we have the frontage on Veronica, the frontage on 27, and our access, which is not from either one of those street frontages, but really internal to the center, makes it certainly a C1 situation where the applicant could certainly argue that we are under the C1 criteria for the unique features of the subject property, where we don't have our site access fronting the road. So I think the board could look at that. In the absence of the C1 criteria, the board can certainly grant the variance relief if you find that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced. I think the board can certainly look at the fact that there are three purposes of the land use law that I think that are advanced by this application. Purpose A talks about promoting the general welfare. Very interestingly, when Franklin last reexamined your master plan in 2020, you talked about in the commercial office area and in the real estate analysis section of that plan, you've talked about a weak office market, but a demand for medical offices. So I do think that it promotes the general welfare to have the signage, which is appropriately scaled to this building for this use, which is recognized as your master plan as a desirable use, and we certainly want to see the GB zone and the commercial structures therein continue to be well-tenanted. I also think the board can rely on criteria I, which talks about a desirable visual environment. I think, as stated earlier, the signage is appropriately scaled to the building. If you have the opportunity to look at the application and look at the signs, you will see that the signage really is very, very appropriately scaled, and it looks quite well, that it fits in with the rhythm. It's an end cap, it sits, it flanks on the other end where we have the urgent care sign, we're proposing the Trinity Rehab sign on the other end cap. So it balances the center, and it certainly looks appropriate. So I think the board can rely on criteria I.
Wait a minute, Christine, this is Bob Shepherd. I'm looking at the two pictures, and the one picture makes absolutely, well, it seems to make good sense. There's a picture of the sign that says Trinity Rehab. And then the other, the other picture, though, is kind of confusing to me, because you have Trinity Rehab, and then right on, right on the corner of that space, but then this next sign is urgent care, isn't it?
So I think, Mr. Shepherd, what you're looking at is the, the, the one, the catty corner shot that we, and it has the urgent care on the side, and then it has the Trinity Rehab, which is fronting Veronica Avenue, which we're proposing, but you can also see in that how the other end cap also has another urgent care sign there. And then we have the Trinity Rehab sign on the side with a dentist, which is actually over our, our office building. So the very purpose of this sign is to have that Trinity Rehab fronting Veronica Avenue, so we can capture and indicate to our clients that we have the rehab center, that you're in the right area, because it's very, it's internal. So you're reading it correctly, and that the Trinity Rehab that we're being proposed, and that the urgent care will flank, will sort of be in the two, in between the two signs, but you can see the doors for the urgent care are under their sign, then the doors for the Trinity Rehab are under the sign internal to the center, and we're proposing the additional Trinity Rehab on the end cap.
On the, on the corner.
On the corner, which will take advantage of its proximity and its frontage on Veronica Avenue. So that is why we're proposing that sign in exactly that location. And I also think, you know, the reason I cited I is because I think if you look at that picture, there is another sign for the urgent care on the other side of that, and I think it balances out the center, and I think it looks certainly appropriately scaled to the building in the center.
Ms. Cofone, could you bring up the, the image, I think the second image, I think illustrates your point?
Yes. So, hold on a second, here we go. Nothing is working well to me.
If I have, I have the documents as well up on my computer, if I'm able to share my screen.
Mr. Koh, then maybe you could do it easier, I don't know.
I just need, I just need the permission to share the screen.
Okay, go ahead.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, go ahead.
If I could just ask you a question, then, so the, the side that's to the left, if you will, that's where Trinity Rehab, the actual space is located, correct? Kind of in the middle there, where that, that existing sign that says Trinity Rehab?
That's correct.
And that's the portion that's facing the interior of the site.
That's exactly right.
The sign that's proposed here is the one that's on the side that's to the rear, I'm sorry, to the right, sorry. That's facing Veronica, and your client wants to put that sign there, so they have greater visibility to Veronica Avenue. And you're basically saying it's in scale with the building, it balances out the signage, because on the other side, the far right, you could see the urgent care, and it's on the end caps. That's, in essence, what you've been, what you've testified to.
Correct, that's exactly right, Mr. Healy, is that the Trinity Rehab sign in that proposed location is there to alert the motoring public along Veronica Avenue that this is where the Trinity Rehab is located in the center. So that is the proposed sign. And you can see, I think that this catty corner view does a great job of demonstrating how it fits very well with the rhythm of the center, because the urgent care is located on the other corner, the urgent care sign, and then similarly situated to the urgent care, it wraps around to the actual building. And I think, when you look at the ordinance for signage in Franklin, there is a provision for secondary wall mounted signs, and it allows for ground floor business uses located on corner lots and having a second facade to have an additional sign. So I think from a planning point of view, when you're evaluating the negative criteria, the board can certainly consider the fact that Franklin's ordinance does consider secondary wall mounted signage. I also think, when you look at the stated purpose of the GB zone, which is to provide business and commercial uses for the local traveling public, and that the district is established to preserve and enhance commercial, financial, retail, and similar activities and services, that this sign package certainly is appropriate and will not have a substantial detriment on either the stated purpose and intent of the GB zone, or the stated purpose and intent of the sign ordinances, which are to have orderly, readable, and appropriate signs to the activity which they pertain, and signs that are compatible with the surroundings. Those purposes come right out of the sign section of the ordinance. So I think, taken together, the board can look at this as a sign that is smaller than what is permissible by ordinance, certainly consistent with the existing signage in the center, and appropriately placed, given that Franklin's ordinance does consider secondary signage for those properties that have more than one frontages. And we have frontage on Veronica Avenue, as well as 27. So I do think that the signers that we're proposing will seek to promote criteria H of the land use law, which talks about the free flow of traffic. So statutorily, we only have to satisfy one or more purposes of the land use law. I believe that the board can grant the relief under the C1 and the C2 criteria. Again, the C1, because this is somewhat of a unique center, where our access comes not from 27 or from Veronica Avenue, but it really comes from the, the doors which front the interior of the center, which renders the C1. The C2, because I believe we satisfy criteria A of the land use law, as well as criteria I in criteria, which is a desirable visual environment, and criteria H, which talks about the free flow of traffic. And then as far as the negative criteria, I see no substantial detriment to the zone plan. I actually think we advance the stated purpose of the GB zone. I recognize that in the master plan that was done in 2020, it was cited that there is a demand for medical type uses, and I think when you look at the intent and purpose of the sign ordinance, you will find that this sign package is completely aligned with that stated purpose. So I unequivocally feel that we meet our statutory burden of proof for the grants of the two C variances that are associated with this sign package.
Christine, I just wanted to go over one, one more, touch, touch on one thing, when you're talking about substantial detriment, substantial impairment to the ma, to the master plan and the municipality zone code, and you did state this, but I think it's worth stating again, is that two signs are permitted in, in, in certain circumstances, correct? So we're not introducing a situation that doesn't exist throughout the, even the shopping center, per se.
Correct, and when you look at, when you look at some, when you look at the intent of the zoning ordinance and the substantial detriment, or the impact on the intent of the ordinance, the language in the ordinance, and I can read it for you, it reads, "Ground floor business uses located on corner lots and having a second facade with a display window fronting on a public street shall be permitted to have one additional sign on the facade of the building facing the side street." So the ordinance certainly contemplates, when you have buildings and you have sites situated like this, that have multiple frontages, that a second facade sign would be appropriate. And when you look at the fact that we have scaled our sign to be less than what would be permissible, I think the board can certainly come to the conclusion that it is an appropriate sign in an appropriate location at an appropriate size.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
I have a question. So I guess, just so I understand it right, this corner unit here, one side has the urgent care and the other side will have this rehab, Trinity Rehab, but, but the actual business there is neither one of those. What is the actual business that's in that corner unit?
The actual business, the Trinity Rehab is access from the interior of the center. So are you asking what occupies, occupies the floor space there?
Right, I mean, it just seems like there are two sides right in that corner. So one says urgent care center, but that's really at the end of it, and the other side will say Trinity Rehab, and it's, it seems like it's two, three doors down. So is there something right where the sign is, like, is there?
That's the urgent care space.
That's the urgent care space.
Yeah, and we, just so the board knows, this is coming from our landlord, he spoke to urgent care, and they have no issues with this sign being placed on their, on their tenant's space.
Okay.
That's what was, that was, that's what was expressed to us.
Okay, all right, thank you. No more questions, then.
Okay, any others?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I apologize, I didn't realize the applicant team, before everyone was brought into the panel, I am working with Mr. Koha on another application outside of the township, so I would like to formally recuse myself from the application at this point.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Now, will there be any lighting, any formal lighting on signs?
If there, if there is any, yes, the proposed sign, uh, front, LED. LED lighting mounted to a raceway.
Okay, anyone else? And you have no further witnesses, correct?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Then we would open to the public.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody with a raised hand.
Then we'll close, and if there's any other comments or discussions, now's the time to have them, otherwise we'll entertain a motion in a second. Okay, anyone?
Okay, I would like to make a motion, we approve Trinity Rehab, DBA 2100012 for the sign variance they've requested.
I'll second Gerald.
Okay.
Harold, Patricia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Bessie Verdas?
Yes.
Elizabeth Clarkin? You're muted.
Yes.
Sorry. Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on now.
I'd like to thank the board for their time, I'd also like to thank Ms. Woodbury and Mr. Healy for helping me, this is my first time in front of your board, they were very helpful, and I greatly appreciate it, and I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer, thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the technology, Christine was amazing, Ms. Woodbury walking us through it, it worked perfectly on our trial run, so I don't know what happened, but I apologize and I thank you for your patience, have a great evening, take care.
Okay, Tabachnik Fine Foods Incorporated, CBA 1500018, site plan with use variance in which the applicant wants to expand the current facility, as well as create a physical covered connection for equipment and foot traffic between the existing building and the proposed expansion at 1230 Hamilton Street, Somerset, Block 92, Lots 5 through 48, in the R10 Zone. And let's bring in the participants.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I've brought in the engineer, the engineer, the planner and the applicant, for some reason, it won't let me make Mr. Linus a panelist. I'm going to unmute you, Frank.
Okay. Do you hear me?
Can hear you. So, a question for our board attorney, Frank. Do we need to see the applicant's attorney?
Uh, you know, we can, we can probably go ahead without the attorney, us seeing the attorney, I think it's important that the professionals who need to be sworn, you know, be visible. I think if, I think we can proceed with the attorney not being seen, if the board's comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
We've seen.
Oh, Frank.
It is.
Okay.
Frank, can you see everybody?
I could see everyone.
Okay, so we just, we just won't be able to see your gorgeous face, Frank.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So I brought in Mr. Arndman, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Tabachnik, and.
Mr. Wilhelm.
Is there anybody else to bring in?
That's it.
Okay, go ahead, please.
All right, thank you very much, Mark. My name is Francis P. Linus, I'm pleased to represent Tabachnik Fine Foods. My offices are located at 21 Clyde Road in sunny Somerset, New Jersey, and it's a privilege to be here before this board. By way of a brief overview and an introduction to the application and what we intend to prove tonight, Tabachnik Fine Foods by history has been here in Franklin Township since 1990. That's about 30 years of their food processing center. Back in 1997, they received an approval from this board, 1998, which memorialized a use variance, bulk variance, and site plan approval to expand their then non-conforming use with an addition to its facility on, on the, on a portion of the subject property that's before the board this evening. Back in 2007, I was privileged to represent Anthony's Plumbing before the board on another section of what is now the consolidated lot, and they received use variances to construct a two-story office and warehouse plumbing, heating, and cooling facility on a portion of the property at the time. Ben Tabachnik, the, the original owner, the original president of Tabachnik Fine Foods, passed away, and his wife, Rita Tabachnik, who's here to testify, became president of the company, and in 2014, Tabachnik acquired Anthony's Plumbing. And they, they acquired Anthony's Plumbing to go in for an expansion of their facility. And back in 2016, for some of you board members who were here, the Board of Adjustment memorialized the use variance, site plan, and associated variances for construction of a food processing addition to the existing building on the expanded property. The approved site plan was not built. So this application is intended to supersede and replace all prior approvals by way of amending the site plan, the bulk and use variance approvals previously granted, but not built. So what was approved back in 2016 was a 31,188 square foot expansion that was never built. The applicant's now seeking site plan approval, amended site plan approval, to construct a building addition of about 36,349 square feet, which is basically. to construct a building addition of about thirty-six thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet, which is basically a five thousand uh square foot addition to the uh approved site. And again, we hope it would supersede and replace the previously approved site plan. Now, the purpose of this minor expansion is to expand the applicant's food processing facility as well as to create a physical covered connection for equipment and foot traffic between the existing building and the proposed expansion. So the applicant is proposing to add an equipment lift on the building exterior and has reconfigured the second floor office layout from the previously approved but not built site plan. A use variance and bulk variances were previously granted by the board in connection with the previously approved site plan. We're also seeking a front yard setback variance from Cottington Avenue along with an increase in lot minor increase in lot coverage necessitated by the proposal. I have four witnesses here this evening, and I think they'll be brief uh because we we did a lot of pre-work here to make sure that we reviewed all the staff reports and uh prepared for this hearing. My first witness will be Rita Tabachnik, who I just indicated uh what is the president of Tabachnik Fine Foods, and and she will offer her testimony as to why she's here. Uh we then will present uh Mitch Aardman. Uh Mitch is our site engineer, our site design engineer, and he'll be presenting testimony. Uh very briefly, you'll hear from our architect, Oliver Wilhelm. Uh and then finally, we have Kevin O'Brien, who's a licensed professional planner, and he'll provide the planning testimony in support of of the request this evening. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, uh I would like to introduce Rita Tabachnik. She can't see me, but hopefully I'll be able to see her.
Okay. Mr. Tabachnik, can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um I'm as Frank said.
Mr. 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 Tabachnik.
Go ahead, Frank.
All right, Mr. Tabachnik, what is your relationship to Tabachnik Fine Foods?
I'm I'm the owner of the company and the president.
Okay, and uh when did you first become involved with Tabachnik Fine Foods?
Uh when I married my husband in nineteen eighty.
Okay, and therefore you're familiar with the site and you're familiar with Tabachnik Fine Foods and the history, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, would you briefly explain to the board why you're here tonight?
I'm here seeking um an expansion to my building so that I can service the numerous customers that I have, well, recipient agencies that I have through USDA. Um at this point, I'm servicing food banks, schools, tribal communities, religious organizations, and an assortment of federal emergency programs. Um I'm a longtime USDA uh preferred vendor. I'm the only USDA certified business factory in Franklin Township. So in order for me to make the multitude of of programs and um products that are necessary for the wide range of recipient agencies that I service, I I can't get another package out of my current building. I am absolutely at capacity, and I'm having to actually turn down um requests for products, which is painful, because when I've turned down requests for products, it means that stuff isn't going to food banks, it's not going to schools, it's not going to tribal communities, and it's not going for disaster aid. During COVID, my company was heavily involved with USDA in the Farm-to-Family Program. And the reason that we're oftentimes solicited is because we're very fast. We're the swift boat, and we can turn a product around. We can make a product that's necessary to be made and ship it out from a multitude of ingredients. So I've been a preferred vendor for many years. Um I'm woman-owned, I'm hub-zoned, I have all the bells and whistles that make me uh very attractive to work with USDA, and I want to continue working with them. And I want to be able to have them come to me and say, okay, we need this product made. Do you think you can make it? Can you make it with these uh different ingredients, whether it's fruit, um vegetables, meats, any grains, beans. It's amazing the amount of, well, you can imagine, the Department of Agriculture, and they only buy American, and they like to source from American companies. So they have some limitations in when they reach out to companies, and they like a quick turnaround, and they want to know that you're going to be able to deliver the product. So I'm extremely fortunate that um they look to me when they need things.
All right, Mr. Tabachnik, you were here in two thousand and sixteen and received use variance approval for a peanut butter product. Do you want to tell the board what happened to that?
Um yes, in twenty sixteen, I was seeking to uh develop a peanut butter plant. Unfortunately, what ended up happening was USDA was the original um person who ran or the the organization that ran um USA and USAID's Ready-to-Use Therapeutic Foods. What ended up happening was USDA was removed from purchasing RUTF and RUSF, and USAID are are partnered with UNICEF, and they wanted to change how the product was purchased. And when they went to the new purchasing procedure, uh that was not to my benefit because UNICEF only wanted um people producing the product who only made RUTF and RUSF. And my plant made a multitude of products. So my co-packer, who was then in Georgia, really did not want to make the product anymore, and it put me it really kind of made me ma- make a choice. Uh did I want to just focus on peanut butter, or did I want to focus on a number of products? And because it wasn't being purchased by USDA anymore, it had moved to um being purchased through USAID, it was no longer beneficial for me to put the money into a plant and proceed with the with the making of a peanut butter plant when all the regulations had changed, the specifications had changed, the way that they were buying it had changed, and everyone involved had changed, and the only other two people making the product were NGOs. And I was a for-profit, and I was not eligible for any of the grants that they were giving out. It just everything had changed about um RUTF and RUSF.
All right, Mr. Tabachnik, is is it fair to say that you're here tonight to uh hopefully get get approval for all kinds of food products?
Well, that's just that's just that's exactly it. Um USDA has a great need across the board for a multitude of products. You know, unfortunately, they don't buy the RUTF, RUSF anymore, but they buy all types of products for me, and I like to continue servicing them, especially with humanitarian relief.
Okay, all right, I have no further questions.
Okay, uh usually we wait till the end of all the witnesses when we went to the virtual format, so if you want to move on.
Mitch Aardman would be my next witness, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, bring him on. Mr. Aardman, you uh would you please write, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Well, we can't hear you, you're muted.
How's this? Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mitch, why can't they see me? Never mind. All right, uh Mitch, would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications, background, and professional experience?
Certainly, um I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have been uh for over twenty-five years. I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Okay, we'll accept his credentials. As he said, we've seen him many times.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh Mitch, did you prepare or supervise preparation of the site plan, the stormwater management maintenance plan, uh the EIS, the TIS, the stormwater impact report, the drainage area report that was all submitted with the prior approval in two thousand and sixteen?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you're certainly familiar with the site?
Yes, I am.
And way back in nineteen ninety-seven or thereabouts, you you also appeared on behalf of Tabachnik in connection with the original uh expansion approval?
That is correct. I've been kicking around since at least that long, yes.
Okay, all right. Uh would you describe the current conditions of the site, and do you have any exhibits to uh to rely on?
Certainly, I'll if I can share um you can, yes. That should be sharing.
I see it.
Very good.
You want to identify that, and so we could have it marked, Mitch?
Certainly, uh this exhibit is our dimension plan, sheet three in the set that's before you, last revised one twelve twenty-one, and it's a colorized version of that plan. Uh the notable features are the the building, the green.
Before we proceed, counsel, can can we mark this as A one, or do we need to do that?
Yes, that's fine. He's identified it, so that'll be marked as A one.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Mitch.
Certainly, I was just gonna say the notable areas of the uh existing proposed building, the green space, and I'll get into detail on the red dash line, which was the previously approved plan. Now that we're um for the record, I want to just blow this up so we can see a little more clearly. Sharing good today, okay.
All right, what's what's the applicant's proposal emphasizing the changes from the prior approval?
Certainly. So to orientate everybody, Hamilton Street at the top of the plan, Wheeler Place on the right, and Cottington uh to the bottom or to the south. North is up on this plan. As Frank said, um the property is a combination of many lots with a total area of two point eight four acres.
And Mitch, not to interrupt you, but those two lots have now been consolidated?
That's correct.
Okay.
And uh surrounding the property again, uh Hamilton uh on the top, and there's single-family residences along Wheeler and on the far side of Cottington Avenue. Uh as far as existing conditions, um on the right side of the plan, the east side is the existing building, which I'm outlining here. There's an existing curb cut off of Hamilton Street, and the existing parking is in the front of the property right now. Uh actually, in Mark's report, there's another good aerial which shows the entire property showing that on the western half of the lot is presently wooded. There's also uh basically an opening or a connection to Cottington Avenue at the present time, although not actively used. Uh so that is pretty much the existing conditions on the site. Uh what we have proposed is basically from uh this dividing line that I'm showing here, an L-shaped addition, which basically goes to the west and then turns and goes up to Hamilton Street. And as Frank said, that is uh largely similar to what was approved on the prior application. Uh it's a twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-six square foot footprint, and the mezzanine is nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three square feet. That yields the total that was mentioned of thirty-six thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet. And basically, what this new addition does is to create this U-shaped building now and provide a nice truck court in the middle of the site. The existing loading docks on the existing building I'm pointing at in this location on the west face of the existing building. Now we'll have loading docks on the east face of the addition, creating a a good enclosed truck court area. The parking spaces will remain in the front area. Uh this be uh some reconstruction, and a new parking lot of eighteen spaces, so I'm pointing to is on the western side of the property. Uh as noted, there are deviations, but they are minor, and I'll go over those.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, this dash line in red is what was approved in the prior application. So as you can see, um largely the same as was shown before. The um northern, western, and southern faces are all exactly the same. The largest change, and you'll you'll hear from Oliver, the architect, a little bit north, is this building connector. So uh previously, uh you'd come down the ramp in the prior application, and this would be outside. It was a paved area where fork trucks would go from the ramp in the existing building to the proposed loading dock area. As they reviewed the process, their food preparation, et cetera, it was determined that really should be an enclosed space uh to keep all all the products uh to be more controlled inside a building space. So that's the purpose of this connector, which is the bulk of the footprint addition uh that you see for you tonight. The other small change, we actually were out further on the loading dock side of the addition. We've pushed that in. We took a look, we figured we'd since we had a little more square foot on the footprint, we'd give some back and give us a little bit more room in the loading area. And the third minor change is on the south side of the building, and that's going to be a uh a materials lift, which is basically shown on that southern elevation. Uh on the prior application, we actually had uh a variance that was approved for utilities in those same location. Um at that time, it was fifteen feet off the uh Cottington, now we're eleven feet off. That will be an enclosed structure, basically. Again, Oliver will get into that, but it's just the raised materials from one floor up to the mezzanine. And again, we've held that same setback line out of that two hundred and eleven-foot building wall addition. It's only a fifteen-foot-wide encroachment into that area, so pretty minor in the scope of what we're doing. And as you can see, Cottington pavement actually ends partway into the new addition that we're showing, and this is the paper street. So it really won't have any impact uh in that location on Cottington.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Aardman, have you had the opportunity to review Robert Russo's report, Robert Russo from CME being the uh board engineer dated June fourteen, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, I have.
And uh is it you've discussed that with our client, and the applicant will comply with each and every item set forth in in Mr. Russo's report?
That's correct. They're uh they're all technical in nature. I see no changes that'll uh principally affect the site plan, and we're we will will agree to conform to those.
Okay, and did you have an opportunity to review with your client, uh the applicant, uh Mark Healy's May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one memorandum?
Yes, I did.
You want to go over that, and any uh issues there?
Sure, there there are two specific points uh really that are in in Mark's report. Um he asked about visual and noise impacts to the neighbors. Um and as uh as I alluded to, there's there are neighbors south of uh Cottington at the bottom of the plan here, and under present conditions, there's the active loading dock area, and this is all open going to Cottington. So when we actually put the addition in and closed that in, uh you pretty much couldn't have a better noise and uh uh visual barrier to this loading dock area. It'll be a thirty-five-foot-high building, so better than any landscaping could be. So I I think with that addition uh will really eliminate existing conditions, and it's an improvement uh to the property for the neighbors.
Okay.
The second point that Mark asked about was traffic to Hamilton and the surrounding areas. Uh once again, while there will be a slight increase, there's some additional loading docks. This is not a by no means a high-volume uh truck turnover operation that they run here. Now, the the food processing is a deliberate process uh and goes in and out uh but not at a high rate, and it will be the same as we testified to previously. Uh we're talking about numbers of trucks per week, not not per day that come out of this facility. Uh so once again, when we close off the uh acts any access to Cottington, there can be no traffic to Cottington. It'll all go to Hamilton, so that would reduce any potential need for any trucks on Cottington or Wheeler Place. So again, I believe a benefit to the area.
Okay, and Mr. Aardman, have you had the opportunity to discuss with your your client, the applicant, uh the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority report dated July first, twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, that's all technical in nature. We'll make the applications and the forms that they need.
Okay, uh there's a report issued by the Department of Public Health and Safety. Our architect will address that issue. Uh did you review the Office of Fire Prevention report dated June eighth, twenty twenty-one from John House, our Director of Fire Prevention?
Yes, John is fine with the application.
Okay, and how about um Officer Jose Jaime from the uh Police Department, July eighth?
I had that. I don't have it in front of me. My recollection is there were no issues.
Right, I I can read it. It says, I've reviewed the above-captured plans and have no comments at this time. All right, how about the Environmental Commission, which of course is merely an advisory body to the to the board? Did you take a look at that and discuss it with your client?
I did. And I can hit those comments. So the first uh and the first two uh really deal with stormwater. The first is previous uh paving for cars, and the second is is a green roof. They're all both can apply in some uh conditions. We basically have, and I should have noted it in the um west northwestern corner of the property here. West, northwestern corner of the property here, a uh stormwater retention basin. That's been approved from the prior application by the county. By SAW erosion and by DNR Canal and by your township and was all technically complete. So at this point, we're proposing to stay with that design, uh, and we're not looking to uh do any of the pervious. I, I do like pervious, a, a caution for a lot of projects in Franklin. The soils need to be good and unfortunately, we don't have those in this area of Franklin. Um, the next point is, is solar cells and Rita said uh she would consider them, we have to really look at the, how the roof is gonna work out. And sometimes with the equipment they need and penetrations through the roof on a plant like this, it's not always as um. Uh, economical or efficient to have them on a plant like this, so um, not a commitment, but definitely we'll, we'll take a look at that, she said. Uh, regarding car charging electric, again, they know their personnel pretty well, nobody's coming to work here in a Tesla right now or other vehicle. So if and when that happens, um, it would be amenable, but not as part of this, this application. And the last one for um uh tree replacement, we have provided the calculation and. We're uh, have agreed and continue to agree for a contribution to the tree fund.
All right, Mitch, where, where do we stand with our outside agency applications and approvals?
So we're in pretty good shape with them, Somerset County and Hamilton, as you know, is a county road. Uh, technically, we are signed off and they just need some fees when we're ready to go to construction.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Yep, same with DNR Canal, technically they're good and they signed off on the detention basin for technical as well, that's.
All right, I have no further questions.
Okay, you can bring your next witness then.
Okay, Oliver Wilhelm, thanks Mitch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Board.
Uh, Mr. Wilhelm, can you raise your red hand?
Shall do.
You swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wilhelm, will you give the board uh and any members of the public who are participating the benefit of your uh educational and professional background qualifications and experience?
Sure, my name is Oliver Wilhelm. Um, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from this uh Syracuse University, uh graduated nineteen eighty five. I've been a licensed architect in New York for thirty two years, I've been in New Jersey for twenty seven years. I've been practicing architecture uh with my firm for the last twenty three years. Uh, we're familiar with Tabashnik foods, um, I've been to planning boards, both your, your own planning board as well as many planning boards.
Okay, we'll, we'll accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oliver, did you bring with you or do you have, are you prepared to display any exhibits, specifically some exhibits that were requested by Mr. Healy?
I am, and I do.
Okay, would you, would you make that presentation, please?
Sure. Excuse me, one second now. Two. And we want to bring up. Bear with me. Back. Am I doing this correctly? Yes, I am. Okay. I assume that you can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I believe the uh initial uh request was an elevation of the uh, the south elevation, which is along Cottington. Uh, which indicates the location uh with that wall, uh, the freezer, both the existing freezer uh that was approved in a previous application as well as a new freezer and cooler. Expansion, which we're showing here.
No, we're not seeing that. We're seeing some, a memo of some kind or.
Oh. My apologies, um. Am I doing this incorrectly? Clearly. Stop sharing. Hold on a second. My apologies, let me try this one more time. How about now?
Same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing, okay, fine, so then I'm gonna bring this down here. For whatever reason, my screen is doing multiple things it shouldn't be doing. I apologize for that.
Mitch, do you have a copy of the exhibit?
I got it. There, wait me one second. Okay. Now you're seeing where my screen shows, right?
You wanna identify that, please?
Yes, that is A five, uh, that is the south elevation along Cottington Street.
And that was part of the package that was submitted to the board?
Uh, no, that was, uh, this is in addition to the, uh, this was a request from uh, from the planner.
All right, I'd like to, uh, with the, with the consent of counsel, I'd like to mark that exhibit as A two?
Yep, as south elevation, if you can give us just a date, Mr. Wilhelm?
It'll be today's date, um, of uh July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, there's another exhibit that I'd like to share, uh, which is.
All right, what does this exhibit show or you, or you wanna present another exhibit?
I'm present, I'm, I'm, I'm presenting two more exhibits, it's A six and A seven. A six shows a three dimensional image of the new loading dock. And the corridor's um connection between the existing. And unfortunately, the um, um, the, between the new and the existing. The existing is behind the image, uh, that'll be A seven where you see an overview.
All right, before we leave, is there a date on A six?
Uh, same date, it'll be seven fifteen, two thousand and twenty one.
Okay, you can proceed to A seven.
Sure. A seven is a three dimensional view of the entire site. And I thought that this was very beneficial to the board to show. What you see here is the existing U shaped building, uh, the U shaped building. Uh, you'll see the freezer wall, you'll see the connection which is required by U the uh USDA for the plant. Which is the connection between the existing, which is shown in the hatch, and the new which is shown in new. Um, and this was just an overview of the entire site.
Okay. All right, uh, it, it, Mr. Mr. Wilhelm, do you have an opportunity to review some of the reports uh that uh? Were issued, more specifically, the report issued by Patty Elliott. Patty Elliott from the um. She had a question. Ms. Elliott's from the County of Somerset, Department of Public Health and Safety. Her question in her May nineteenth memo is, will the compactor handle putris, putricible garbage? And remember, I asked you yesterday what putricible garbage was, because I didn't know what it was. What is putricible garbage?
Well, putricible garbage is wet garbage, um, and, and what we have here, Tabashnik, is strictly dry garbage.
All right, so you don't have any wet.
We have no processing waste that uh would require a grease trap or anything to that in there, no.
And uh, the other question I have for you is on, on any odors coming out of the facility?
Yes, um, at this point in time, there is no cooking going on. We have a processing uh uh floor or a kettle floor on the second floor. Uh, that's vented out, it is strictly vapors, no odors whatsoever, um. And if in fact something should change in the future, it's easy to mitigate that. Uh, but at this point in time, there are no orders coming out of the new expansion.
All right, and Mr. Healy had a question of as to the location of the equipment lift and the variance attendant to that?
Yes.
You wanna address that, please?
Sure, um, the material lift was located in such a location where you could take uh four pallets of raw frozen product. And bring them up to the second floor with the kettles being located. Um, the best location for that was in the back area. So the tool, product flow would come in, goes directly up, no ma, uh, no personnel can go on that ma, uh, on that material lift. So with forklifts, you're putting the pallets on the ground floor level, you're pulling them out on the second floor level, putting them into the kettles and the processing goes along.
All right, what are the benefits of the connection and keeping everything interior?
Um. From a USDA standpoint of view, anytime you take product in, into the um, open air. It has to be sealed. Uh, by enclosing the existing facility and allowing a link that is temperature controlled. And air controlled and clean, you are now able to take product from the new facility into the old facility and vice versa. As well as personnel not having to go outside to come back inside into a USC, uh, USDA facility.
Okay, and my final question, I should have asked you this at the beginning, you were the architect who prepared the plans that are before the board this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
You prepared or supervised the plans?
A little bit of both.
I have no further questions.
Okay, you do have one further witness, right?
Yes, I do, Kevin O'Brien, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Mr. O'Brien, raise your red hand. You swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. O'Brien, Kevin, would you give the board and any members of the public who are participating the benefit of your professional uh qualifications and experience?
Uh, yes, I've had the uh. Unique advantage of having appeared before this board on numerous occasions. I am still a licensed New Jersey professional planner. My license is in good shape, I'm still a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology. And all my previous qualifications are still in order, if that pleases the Chair.
Okay.
Except your credentials, I'd just like to hear you struggle a little bit with.
My mother taught me to be modest, Mr. Chairman, you know, it's always a.
All right, all right, uh, Kevin, wha, what did you do uh to prepare for this application and your testimony tonight? To visit this site, but.
Thank you, uh, in addition to uh reviewing the application, attending preparatory meetings, looking at the area. The ordinance, the master plan, the municipal land use law. Uh, I also went into the prior applications concerning this property and prepared an outline of testimony.
Okay, would you care to bring the board and the public through with your testimony?
Sure. Um, I, I'm looking at my, my outline, I've got a lot of information here. And I don't think it's wise to repeat what the other professionals have already stated. The uh board has heard their testimony concerning the site plan, the architecture and the need. Uh, I, I think given uh not only the time, but uh having been with this board a large part of the last several months. I know you've put in a lot of long hours of late, so uh let me go directly to planning testimony. And rely on the other um experts' testimony and answer any questions that the board may have along the way. The application tonight is for food processing. Which is very similar to what was approved back in two thousand and sixteen. In fact, the two thousand and sixteen resolution, uh, which was based on Ms. Tabashnik's testimony concerning uh the United Nations Children's Fund, US Aid. And other international organizations concerning the peanut, peanut butter mix. Uh, that application and approval were based very heavily upon that very specific testimony. And the resolution of two thousand and sixteen stated, quote, "In the event that a new product other than peanut butter or food products slash nutritional supplements. Satisfying the same need of the peanut butter is proposed to be manufactured at the site. Further board review and approval will be required." You've heard Ms. Tabashnik talk to you about how there is a, an ongoing humanitarian need. Uh, now throughout our nation, um, through the United States Department of Agriculture. Which is gathering American foodstuffs and American manufacturers and sending those foods to places in need. All of us saw the tragic videos uh over the days of COVID where people were lined up. In endlessly to get food, which was being distributed by the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA. Uh, nationally in New Jersey, I know there were some in Franklin, there were some in my own town in this area. Were people who were tragically affected by COVID and the um following economic fallout. Uh, were hungry, needed food, they didn't have jobs. And this is a need that was met by Tabashnik's, uh, by the United States Department of Agriculture, uh, other manufacturers. So what we'd like to do tonight is key in on that phrase in the two thousand and sixteen resolution. Um, other than peanut butter or food products satisfying the same need of the peanut butter. The need of the peanut butter was to feed hungry people. The need today is to feed hungry people. Hungry people who through no fault of their own or in circumstances that they need help. And it may not just be COVID, it may be a hurricane, a tornado, a wildfire, some other disaster. Uh, we've seen so many over these last several years. And every time a, a town is wiped out, people are affected. People need to be fed, they need to be given water, they need to be sheltered. And Mr. Tabashnik's company is one that feeds these folks. And as the old saying there, but for the grace of God go I, any one of us could have been on the Jersey Shore back in Sandy in twenty twelve. Or affected by the flooding in Irene in twenty eleven when there was no electricity, no power, uh, no food, no water. Uh, these are the circumstances that Mr. Tabashnik and her company are needed for. So since that phrase was put in the resolution in two thousand and sixteen, we'd like to address the board this evening about changing that phrase so that. A, this use variance, should it be approved by the board, we'll talk about um. We'll talk about food production. And we'll not be talking about peanut butter or fruit or crackers or Tabashnik's famous soups or any other specific kind. Of food product, but rather food products in general, so that Tabashniks can pivot, respond to the USDA as they are asked. Respond to any other agency that reaches out to them and give them that flexibility to create the food that is needed and ship it out. And as Ms. uh Tabashnik indicated earlier, her company remained open all through COVID, employing all thirty six of her employees. Uh, not only feeding those families, but those families, of course, helped the local economy. Uh, those families are there to help us create these foodstuffs and be a source for the American government. So. Our application for a use variance for food production. I think is an important distinction to make from the two thousand and sixteen resolution. With any use variance, we've got to prove our, our usual burden of proof that there are special reasons. That we meet the positive and negative criteria. In two thousand and sixteen, when we discussed the unique background of these foodstuffs and helping. Uh, the agency for, for international development in the United Nations. We described this as an inherently beneficial use. I believe that it maintains its inherently beneficial use, not only because it is something that is an advantage. And benefit to the people of the state of New Jersey. Crises we faced in the past, but our entire nation and potentially people across the globe. An inherently beneficial use, which is something that benefits everyone. And here, it's not a. And here it's not a geographic specificity like New Jersey, but rather, rather broad. And as an inherently beneficial use, we meet the special reasons that are required for a use variance. But to buttress that, let's talk about the municipal land use law and the various goals of the municipal land use law that this application supports. And amongst those are item A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals and general welfare. Item F, to encourage the appropriate and efficient expenditure of public funds by the coordination of public development with land use policies. Item G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And item M, encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities, shaping land development to the more efficient use of the land. I believe this application does meet those goals of the municipal land use law. It can also be reconciled with the master plan of the township of Franklin. And there are a number of goals that are listed, including locate major employment and traffic drawing uses in areas where they will least impact residential neighborhoods. This is located on Hamilton Street. We are closing off the access on Cottington so there'll be no impact whatsoever upon those residences there. The 26th, the most recent reexamination talks about the manufacturing center and how there is a high level of manufacturing in Franklin due to the connectivity of major roadways, the availability of land and the presence of workers, as well as encouraging infill within existing industrial districts to reduce sprawl by increasing density while minimizing environmental impact. By expanding the existing facility, by keeping it facing Hamilton as it is now, by using land that's been used for food processing since 1962, I believe that this application is particularly suitable for this location and has a longevity of use that is familiar to folks in the township and in this neighborhood. In terms of the negative impact, as an inherently beneficial use, we follow the seek a balancing test, which I've discussed with the board before, in that we find out what what is at stake here for inherently beneficial use, what is the public interest? And here the public interest is manufacturing food products for government agencies providing food relief. We can then discuss the detrimental effects that would ensue from the grant of a variance. The expansion of this facility is only 3% larger than what was allowed back in 2016. That's definitely a minimal expansion. The benefits of closing off Cottington, the benefits of enclosing the entire manufacturing within the facility in order to maintain that certification from the United States Department of Agriculture, as well as to satisfy the onsite inspectors from the USDA who are there every single day is extremely important in order to keep this operation going. The third step of the secret balancing test is whether or not any conditions can be imposed. And since there are no detrimental effects that I can identify, I don't think that there are any conditions. Well, of course, what Mr. Healy and your engineer are going to put on this application in a very general way. And then lastly, the board should weigh the positive and negative criteria by balancing the public interest against the public detriment. And I believe that the public interest of providing the manufacturer of food products outweighs any detriment. And in 1997, 2007 and 2016, this board found no negative impact upon the area, the neighborhood or the township. So we've talked about special reasons, talked about the positive criteria and that this application can be reconciled with the master plan and the ordinance. And lastly, we've met the negative criteria. I believe that this application does meet all those criteria. Moving the use variance towards food production and away from a specific type of food allows the Tabashniks to proceed to help the American people, help people worldwide, be nimble and responsive to the United States Department of Agriculture and serves the public interest nationally as well as locally. And I believe that I can conclude this application by saying that to allow the manufacturer, the manufacturing of food products, quote unquote, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Healy pointed out some other variances. You want to go through those variances, the building height variance?
Sure. The extension of the building height that was granted in 2016 is a result of the additional 3,000 square feet of building. The approved height from 2016 will be extended along that new part of the building. So it was previously considered by the board, accepted, and I believe that that can be considered by the board at this time.
Okay, and the front yard variance on Hamilton Street?
Yes, that's been very well explained by Mr. Arndman, and I would concur with his finding that it is the minimum.
Okay, and Mr. Wilhelm explained the front yard Cottington Avenue variance for the equipment. Lot coverage, impervious coverage and building mounted signage. Do you see any issues with respect to those variance requests?
No, I do not. I believe that they're subsumed within the use variance. But one could also justify them on a C2 basis and that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And I have not been able to identify any detriments in the seek a balancing test.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay, and I would say as for the board, we would be open to questions for anybody, for any witnesses. If there are any questions.
I have a couple of questions for the last witness. Mr. O'Brien?
Good evening, Mr. Shepherd. How are you?
I'm doing fine.
I'm glad to hear that.
I enjoy your outfit tonight.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I was going to wear my hat, but you beat me to it.
Yep. Now, my first question is, what do you see as the difference between food production and food processing? You seem to be looking at this term food production like it has some broader meaning than food processing, which I think Mrs. Tabashnik identified what they do there as food processing.
We wanted to give the board a term to use should this board decide to grant a variance. And whether it's food processing or food production is immaterial to me as a planner. I defer to Ms. Tabashnik whether or not there is a distinction in her industry to it. But we wanted to make sure that the board moved on from the 2016 resolution that talked about the peanut butter and tying the resolution to the peanut butter itself. And we wanted to expand that use to allow Tabashniks to respond in whatever way needed by USDA. Mr. Tabashnik, did you have a comment on production versus processing?
Well, production is making it. It's actually physically making the product. When I say I can't produce anymore, it means my machines are tapped out. They can't make any more product. They're running as fast as they can. When I talk about processing, processing is actually making the product. What goes into the process of making it? How time consuming is that? What are the ingredients involved? So the process is making and is the physical making of the product and the production is getting it made.
So perhaps the board.
Clarify, or is that, you know?
Perhaps the board would consider both terms, processing and production, in order to fully describe Mr. Tabashnik's operation.
Now, now, Mr. O'Brien, when you were talking about the negative criteria and you said there are no negative criteria, would you agree that the reason there is no negative criteria is because the applicant has stated, actually, the applicants and witnesses have stated that there is no wet garbage produced as part of this food production process. And there's also no cooking that is involved and there's no odors. Is that what you considered those limitations in coming to your conclusion that there was no detrimental aspects to this?
I did, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you very much. I think those are very important aspects to this application in terms of its impact upon the neighbors and the township.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Anybody, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, quick question, Mark Healy, just to, I thought I heard that there's no cooking in the expanded area. Is that the answer or is there no cooking on the site entirely?
Mr. Tabashnik?
Well, there's absolutely cooking in my current facility because I make a whole line of products over there. But I also make a line of products that don't require cooking. On the new site, to be able to make more of what I'm currently making, that side will be the non-cooking side at this time.
Okay, because I just wanted to clarify that because I thought that that's what I heard the architects say, that in the expanded area, there would not be any cooking involved. So that's correct, Mr. Tabashnik?
That's the current plan because I plan on moving that operation because I can't fit any more machines in my existing facility. So I plan on moving the non-cooking side over to the new facility. But I will say, as I grow, I would like to have an option to cook on the other side too, because I'm sure I'm going to have to expand all of my lines, not just the non-cooking ones. But that's where I'll start with the non-cooking lines on the other side.
I have a question. This is Gary Rosenfeld. Are you going to be making any kind of soup on this facility? And if you are, wouldn't that cause some kind of odor?
Well, I currently make soup in my existing facility. I have a hot pack on my existing side and I will continue to make soup on the hot pack side. On the new, so I won't be producing any more odors than I have for the last 30 years. But yes, I'm going to be making soup in my current facility. I'm not going, I mean, actually, I make 26 different types of soups in my current facility. It's a hot pack and I make other hot pack items there. Someone complained about the soup smell, so I guess that's a good thing.
So that wouldn't cause any more of the odor than you have at the present time?
No, it wouldn't. The existing line that I'm making of soups is what it is. I mean, I already make 26 different varieties, so I don't anticipate that I'll make any more varieties. So whatever the smells are from those 26 will remain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buck.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a few. Did we have a fence around the stormwater retention basin before? Is that still part of the last application?
Hi, yeah, Mitch Arndman here. I can respond. That's actually a fairly shallow basin. We did not have a fence around it.
Okay.
The total depth is.
Solar cell, I know they. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to say the total depth is really less than three feet. Did you hear, were you able to hear that?
I didn't, total depth is three feet. That's all I heard.
Yeah, for the detention basin, I was just saying that's a shallow basin, so we did not fence that.
Okay. All right, but there will be water in it when it rains, correct?
When it rains, that's correct.
Okay, I understand that having solar cells on the roof is a problem. What about solar cells in the parking lot? They have a, you know, canopy with cells on top, which actually makes a cover for the cars underneath. Would that be something that we could condition in?
I don't think we're looking to have that as a condition. We realize that solar is, you know, wherever you can, it's a good opportunity for clean energy. It's a fairly small lot, so, and we've done solar on canopies on a couple of projects in the township, actually. And until you get a critical mass, having to build those structures themselves for the canopy, there's a decent cost associated. So until you get 100 or 200 car parking lot, it's honestly tough to make the economics make sense.
Okay, and you know, electric cars are getting more common. What about a charging station? I'm guessing you don't want to put that in either, correct?
Not as a condition. Mr. Tabashnik said if her or family or employees who work there come up to it, she'd be, you know, amenable in the future, but really not looking for a condition of this project.
Okay, and my last question is going to be to Rita. I can't even pronounce it, the garbage that they were talking about that shouldn't go in the compactor.
You and me both, Mr. Rich.
Pardon me?
You and me both. I had trouble with Prudh Triseth set myself.
Yeah, I got a crooked tongue, so it don't work. But that brought up another question. What do you do with a load? You do, or you're doing a batch of soup? What if somebody, instead of putting a pound of pepper in it, puts 10 pounds of pepper in it? What do you do with the soup? Do you throw it away, recycle? What do you do with that?
We fix it. We fix it. Well, basically, let me say this to you. If my cooks at this point don't know how to make the soup, I've been doing this for 40 years and my cooks have been with me for 10 or 15. So if they don't know how to make the soup by now, I think maybe they got to be demoted. But in all fairness, that doesn't normally, it doesn't normally happen because we batch everything. You know, when we start out, we put the water in and then we batch in the carrots, we put in the barley, but it's all pre-measured. So, and they follow a recipe. Plus, we don't just have one cook, we have a series of cooks and everybody has a job. And we also have a very nosy USDA inspector who's always up in the kitchen overseeing everything. And even though, you know, and some of my soups are for elder care, so he's always looking at everything and testing everything. So we have so many checkpoints between our quality control people, the USDA inspector and my cooks who've been with me for many years, I can honestly say. But we don't throw out anything anyway. What we would probably do if there was a problem, we would batch it and donate it, worst case scenario. Because there's a lot of food banks that will take technically your mistake, but it's not really a mistake. It's got too many beans, it's got too much, because actually, when we do formulations, we batch it all up and then we donate it. There's nothing wrong with it, but you know, maybe it has a little too much pepper in it or too much garlic, but no, we don't, we don't throw out food.
Okay, thank you. I just have, I just have one comment to the some of the questions, not some of them, one of them, in regards to electric charging stations. Where your answer really is, you don't want to put them in, but if some of your employees start coming to you, you know, you would consider it. I don't understand, it's just me, but why not put one in and maybe it would encourage some of your employees to move toward an electric bar? Most of the applications that we've been approving, if not on this board, but a lot of on the planning board, are all getting multiple electric charging stations.
Mm-hmm. Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to comment on that. I'm a hub zone. I'm sure you know what a hub zone is. I have to have 35% of my employees work in the hub zone in order for me to have that qualification. And what my people do is they carpool, like they have a van that they come in and they have like a five-seater car that they come in and they all, because they're all, they all work. And they all, because they're all, they all work within a couple of blocks of the factory. So if you think about thirty-five people and third and a third of them, basically a third, thirty-five percent. Have to work in the in the hub zone and live in the hub zone in order for me to get that qualification. There are very few people actually driving, you know, to work who have, you know, cars that might be using electric. And actually, I'm I'm guilty of it and and my sons and a couple of other people. We don't have electric cars, but the majority of my employees. They like to carpool and they've done a really good job of setting up carpools. So I don't think I can tell them, get rid of your van and uh, get an electric car and they gotta fit four, you know, four or five people in because they want to save money on the gas.
Well, I understand better your logic behind what you're saying.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions? All right, there should be no further testimony, correct? So we should.
Mr. Chairman, I might just ask two questions.
Okay.
I, uh, Mr. Batschnick, what are your hours of operation?
Oh geez, the cooks come in at roughly uh, one to two in the morning. We start production at six and we try and be finished no later than six. That's, you know, cu- currently where where we're at. Now, now we will be, that's that's where we are currently, which is July. Now, we will pick up production. Um, and we'll be working sixteen-hour days come August. So I believe probably if we start at. One, what's that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven? Figure, I don't know what that is. I'm not really terrific at math, but we see the cooks come in at one and then whatever sixteen hours is from there, that's when we would be ending.
Is that five days a week, Rita?
Yeah, we do that five days a week. I try not to work on the weekends because, you know, everybody has families, but yeah, that's basically what it is. So.
And just the last, I know you mentioned you have thirty-five, thirty-six employees. Is that going to expand as a result of the expansion that you're doing?
Yes, I'm gonna definitely need extra cooks and I'm gonna need extra warehousing, all of which I plan to hire locally. What I normally do is I put like a sign, help wanted, right on like the front lawn and let people walk in and apply. Because as I said, I have to maintain thirty-five percent of my employees in the hub zone in order to be hub zone qualified. And I will tell you, that does give me a benefit for USDA. They they really like the fact that I'm hub zone.
And that hub zone is obviously within the boundaries of the township, I gather.
Well, it it hub zone, if you look on the map, um, you have to be, it's been, huh, hub zone is a historically underutilized um, location. Meaning that it's 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 set up by income, which means that low-income people live there. So where my factory is. Um, is considered a low-income area. So they have to live around my um, the hub zone. What you do is you actually put in their their address. And it'll tell you whether or not they're in the hub zone. So when people come in from the area, we put in their address and hopefully they're qualified. If they're not particularly qualified, we train them. Because this is, I have jobs that you don't nece- you don't need a college degree for necessarily. Well, some you do quality assurance and some other things. But to be a machine operator and to work on the line and we teach you how to drive a forklift, you know, we teach you how to batch those kinds of jobs. You know, anybody from the area, we can train.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one question. Um, the. Resolution in two thousand sixteen indicated that the applicant agreed to paint the old and the new building with the same beige color in order to obtain consistency. Uh, is there any objection to complying with that uh, condition of the prior approval?
Rita, may I take that question, please?
Sure, Oliver, take it.
Thank you. Existing uh, facility, uh, the exterior wall on the existing facility is a concrete block. On the new facility, you will have insulated panel. Which is similar to the freezer that has been built, existing and built, and will be used the same material on the new facility. So for the purposes of continuity between new and existing, we'll try to color match, but we're not going to paint. The freezer panels or the new panels because they come pre-finished. Is that explain? And answer your question, Mark.
Well, I think. The purpose or the intent of that original condition is that the building doesn't look like a hodgepodge. Um, there's old sections, there's new sections. So I guess I'll just. Refrain that if you can answer what you would do with the building to not make it look like a hodgepodge of old and new.
Mark, the current penthouse that's above the ramp on the existing building will be modified. Because that's going to be part of the link between existing and new. In support of the USDA link between the existing and the new section of the building. So that hodgepodge that you see right there, which also incorporates some of the refrigeration. Uh, will probably in all likelihood be modified under the new expansion. So the notion of hodgepodge will go away, especially on that elevation as well as on the new elevation. So two, three, and then the two loading docks that are, uh, the loading docks that are on the existing will all match.
Well, wait a minute. Isn't this a site plan application as well as a application for a variant?
Yes.
Then then how is it that where he's sort of talking in a vague kind of way about this problem's going to go away? But I I have no idea of what it's going to look like. How do I vote site plan if I don't know what the place is going to look like?
But I showed you a three D rendering of it.
Yeah, you sure. And that was, it was a three D rendering in sort of a vague blockish shape kind of thing. Didn't show me what it's going to look like.
Well, have you seen? I'm sorry?
Show, show us that again. That doesn't look like, that doesn't show me what it's going to look like.
Give me one second. Okay. Pardon me? Bear with me a second. Okay. Now, uh, Robert, you're familiar with the freezer panels that you see on the on the existing freezer, correct?
Uh, actually, no.
Okay, a freezer panel is basically a metal panel. That is a core of polyiso. And it has metal on the outside that is um. Uh. Um, a kainor finish to it. It can have any color it wants. And basically, it's a vertical panel that has no, that has a seam to it. And then basically, what you're seeing here is vertical panel and a clean panel. And that is occurring also on the office side uh, on the second floor as well as along the loading docks. That on the new building as well as this two-story uh, section. So what you're seeing is a clean wall.
But I'm not seeing anything.
There's nothing displayed, Oliver.
Up on the screen?
Oh, again, I didn't share. My apologies. You can see it now?
It's coming up.
You're seeing my three D right now, right?
Not yet. No, just a, just a dark screen, Oliver. It says it's going to share. There it is.
There it is.
Hmm.
For the record, that's A seven, I believe, council?
No, no, I'm sorry, that's A six, uh, Frank, it's just one, A six. So basically, you have your your uh, your uh, dry storage enclosure. You have your new loading docks. You have the office expansion. You have that dry trash area that's going to be uh, um. Butt it out. And then here's your corridor wall that is going from one facility directly to the other. So you're going to have a clean facade throughout this eye, uh, entire, that is a metal panel wall. Okay, with punchouts for door openings and steel docks that are state-of-the-art for USDA facilities.
And what's the exterior going to be made of? Is it going to be made of of steel panels?
It's a metal panel. Yes, it's it's a, it's a pre-pre-made of metal panel that's insulated. Whether four inches for a cooler or six inches for a freezer. And it is going to match the existing color of the freezer that is there now.
But it, and that's going to be all the way around, correct? The whole, the whole building is going to look like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the only difference is that if I may, uh, bear with me one second. The only difference is, Robert, that at the entryway to the office space.
For the record, what exhibit is this?
This is exhibit seven, sir.
A seven, thank you.
You're welcome. On the corner of where the office entry is, you're going to have a two-story uh, metal aluminum and glass entryway. But in the food processing. Standards as far as buildings are concerned, metal panel is the predominant material utilized. A, because it is insulating, it it does wonders, it provides you the insulation for freezer and cooler. Also provides you with the cleanliness on the inside where you can wash it down and on the outside you can do the same thing. So materials like stucco, materials like uh, shingles or things like that is not. Typically what you use in these type of facilities. I hope that's clear, Robert.
Any other questions? Okay, Mark, could we open to the public?
Hey, just to remind the public that if you want to make a comment or ask questions, you're participating via WebEx, you can. Use the raised hand function or if you're calling in, you can press star three. And I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we'll close to the public. Mr. Linus, would you like to make a?
Yes, very briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we appeared before this board in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, this particular site uh, was originally approved for an expansion back in nineteen ninety-seven, a good portion of it, two, two-plus acres. Uh, then in two thousand and seven, Anthony's Plumbing was approved, which was the about point eight acres. It was then added to Tabachnik sometime in in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, Rita Tabachnik brought this to the board for uh, the uh, the food processing expansion. Uh, out, out came the peanut butter and you've heard all the reasons why we cannot be restricted or should not be restricted to that one particular product. We honored the board's resolution. Uh, we came back and we've proven, I believe. An entitlement to a use variance for food processing and food production at this site. Which has been in existence for many, many, many years in Franklin Township. The other item I'd like to add is that Tabachnik Fine Foods has been a good neighbor in this community and is the, according to Miss Tabachnik. Uh, the only USDA certified food processing center in Franklin Township. And I think uh, she's indicated that it's needed, the expansion is needed. And when we talk about the site plan. If you look at the site plan that was approved in two thousand and sixteen and compare it to the site plan that's being proposed, there's minimal, minimal changes. In terms of uh, uh, intensity of of the site plan. So I do think that our witnesses uh, did establish. The entitlement to a variance, to the variances, and I do believe that the site plan is appropriate. And I do believe we've given the board the opportunity to pass this uh. Pass on the variances and approve the variances as well as the site plan. And I want to take this time to thank the board for their time, attention, and inquisitive nature with respect to uh, this particular project. I think the board has done a fantastic job on that. And I also want to compliment the board staff uh, on on these trying times of these COVID uh, kind of uh, procedures. I've been involved in many of them on both sides, planning board attorney in a couple of towns and developers attorney in other towns. So I do think that it's a challenge and uh, uh, we're we're happy to be here. And uh, the Tabachnik Fine Foods is happy to be in Franklin Township. So we would respectfully request your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
Yes, I I have a couple of, I have a couple of thoughts about what the uh, resolution should look like. Um, there's two things, or actually, um, yeah, two things that are. Um, that I'm thinking about. One is that I would agree that we, that we don't make the. Um, the resolution so narrow as to limit uh, what they're going to do to simply peanut butter and give that more. Um, opportunity to um, adjust to uh, market uh, needs. Uh, but I think that the uh, resolution um, should uh, mention that the, that the um. That the site will not produce any wet garbage. And we can't really say that they're not going to do any cooking because just listening to uh, Mrs. Tabachnik. Talking about what, what goes on at the old segment and and making that their delicious soup. But um, so I don't think we can say no cooking, but I think we should say no odors. So that if something does go sideways at the facility, we have something to say about that. That's one thing. So I think it should say. No wet garbage, no odors. Um, and it should say food production and processing. And the other part of this is. What the outside of the building looks like. And I think that we take a um, a phrase that I heard the architect use at the very end. Uh, when he said that the metal panels that will be used on the outside of the building. Will match the color of the existing freezer. So that we get some sort of a. Um, an overall uh, coordinated appearance uh, for the building. Um, tho- those are my thoughts at this point. Um, I'll make a resolution if unless. Uh, maybe other people have some thoughts that conflict with that or want to add some other things.
I I have a comment, a couple of comments on that, Mr. Shepherd. Uh, the uh, wet garbage, even Patty Elliott in her report says, will the compactor handle wet garbage? Uh, if so, she's saying if so, if there is wet garbage, it should not be placed above the trench drain. So I I would seek a modification of of that proposed resolution to say if there is wet garbage, it should not be placed above the trench drain.
Well, here's.
I, you know, I.
I I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Linus, but my, my, I heard testimony where they said there is no wet garbage. So if you're presenting an application in which there is no wet garbage, I think the resolution should reflect that.
Okay, any other?
We lie on on reader for that. And I, and I'm, I, I don't know what what you mean by no odor. I I don't understand that, how that translates into a readable resolution or an enforceable resolution.
All right, well, can anybody give me some suggestions as to what else to say?
Well, let me, yeah, let me um, just ask a question first, then. Just I believe the site does produce odor. I I, and I believe that what produces odor is the cooking. So if the board is, if the board is concerned about addition. So if the board is if the board is concerned about additional odors, perhaps a condition would be that they can't have if they do additional cooking, they'll have to go back to the board. That's just a suggestion. I I think that's something that's at least a little bit more enforceable than no odors.
Rita, do you have any comment with respect to that?
I do. I do. I would like to have both sides set up to be able to cook. And and I'll I'll I hope I'm not going to bore you, but I'll give you an example. We were very active with Farm to Family, which was a USDA program. And I'm sure you saw the lines of the cars in California. And what they did was they put together vegetables, a chicken chili and cheese products and some other things for a whole family. So they were five pound box, five pound containers each that you were required to make. So that they would it would be at least a week's worth of food for a family. And it was all packed up through our distributors out in California. If I had been limited to one only one side to cook, I wouldn't have been able to produce the quantity of cheese product that was needed. You know, in this facility, I produced as much cheese product as I could for Farm to Family. And if the if another need came in, I mean, God forbid, there should be like another another COVID outbreak. If I was asked to make cheese products for for humanitarian relief, I wouldn't want to have to come back to the board and and say, you know, I need to make cheese on both sides of my factory because people are in need. When this program came out, USDA had they called together industry nationally and said, who's certified by USDA? Who can produce quickly? And we need this yesterday. And literally, we had the we had the meeting on one week and they wanted to be producing by the next week. If you weren't already geared up and able to make this product, you wouldn't have been able to supply all of these cars that were there for Farm to Family. In my situation, I had already been making cheeses. I had already been making them gallon size. And I was able to do this. But I mean, it was it was hard. We getting in all of the ingredients, getting my staff geared up. But it was something we really wanted to do and we worked constantly. And at that time, when COVID was out, we had to send, you know, there was restrictions on when you could travel. We had to notify the police. We had to notify all the areas that we would be open. We sent our people home with letters saying so that no one would stop them in the middle of the night, saying, what are you doing here? That we were food manufacturers. So it would be very limiting for me if there was a disaster aid. And they said, Rita, can you do this, this, and this? And I said, oh, I can't cook on the other side of my, you know, my my factory. Now, I don't anticipate at this time because I'm moving the cold pack over there. But if there was a disaster, I would be I'd like to be able to say, yeah, I can gear up and I can get you what you need. And this happens often when they'll call and say, you know, can you, there's a shortage of of this and this and this. Can you make a product that has alternate ingredients? Because we need it for a food bank. I don't know if anybody knows this. This is and let me know when I when I start to bore everybody. But the Biden administration has put aside $5 billion to enhance food banks. And they're going to be using more fresh and frozen products in food banks because most food banks in inner cities, the people don't have access to supermarkets which have fresh groceries, fresh, you know, vegetables. So and once that happens, it's really going to expand the need. Now, do I think if I'm able to build on the other side and I can move the cold pack over there? That then I can increase the other side, you know, as needed for products for USDA? Yeah, yeah, I think I can. I've bought a bunch of machinery that makes me more efficient. But I don't have any more space. So I really think I would like the option to be able to to cook. I mean, it won't be immediate, but if there's a disaster, I'd like to say, yeah, I can gear up both sides.
I've already conceded that that you need to be able to cook on both sides. That's not the issue. We were talking about was the whether there's odors that the surrounding residents, people in the neighborhoods complain about.
Oh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Listen, Mr. Shepherd, I just wanted to I just I mean, Mr. Chairman and board members, I'm just concerned with a broad, you know, you know, restriction of of any release of odors, I think, as Mr. Healy pointed out. And I think Ms. Tabachnik pointed out, I mean, they currently cook, so there are odors. You know, I that I believe probably already emanate from this facility. I understand your concern, Mr. Shepherd, about increasing that. I just a question, Mr. Bach, how do you currently deal with venting and odor mitigation?
I think we have hoods. I know we have hoods over all of the kettles. And I know that that contains the steam. But the factory is self enclosed. And I, when you stand outside, in all honesty, you don't really smell anything. And on top of that, the cooks come in at one and we start to, you know, pump by six. So my guess is unless you're up at two or three in the morning, you know, outside smelling the air, I don't think you're really getting a lot of odors because by six, we're in production. And once you're in production, we're emptying the kettles and we're packing. So I don't I don't really know that, you know, I'm going to say I'm unsure, but I don't I don't ever. We just haven't had any anybody who's ever complained about odors. And I'm aware of.
And I might point out, and I might point out, there was no public opposition or mention of any odors over the existing facility tonight.
Yeah, you know, most of these people who are right around my factory, I know. Because normally, my son and I walk around the neighborhood and we say hello to everyone. And during the Christmas season, I try and drop off soup to as many of the neighbors as I can, stop and talk to them so that they know who I am. And on top of that, I have an open door policy. If you have something to say, you knock on the door, you come in and let's talk about it if there's a problem. Like periodically, people will come over from the VA, you know, just to not the veterans hall that's on the other side of me. And they'll be like, ask for some soup, you know, we do donations, we sponsor the Franklin Food Bank, you know. I just have not. This is not a problem that's really occurred. I guess I'm just lucky.
And the cooking is for Mark. Is is there a record of complaints about odors from this facility?
I've heard it mentioned. I can't, but I don't know if those complaints are valid, to tell you the truth. And I can I certainly can't tell you that they've been continuous. Over the years, I've heard a comment or two. I think that's really the way to say it.
It's been there that the factory has been here for a long time. So it's hard for have a little bit of a problem understanding where there would be too many really you know, hard complaints about the the odors that we wouldn't have heard about it a lot more than we have.
No, the complaints are certainly not
that's not there.
Yeah, they're certainly not plentiful. Again, I can't speak to how valid the complaints are. Again, I've heard a comment or two over the years.
Yeah, I if I can say something, I think odor obviously can't be measured. Chemical plants do that all the time. You need a fancy like mass spectrometry and stuff like that to do it, which I don't think relates at all to to this. It's, you know, it's I guess not an objectionable odor. So so I think I heard someone say that odor cannot be measured. I don't think that's correct, but in this case, I don't think it applies anyway. But I mean, I guess one way would be to you know, if there's like lots of complaints, then you could, you know, take a sample of the air and send it off to a lab and see what it does, you know, in comparison to some other plants that that do, you know, emit odor. But I mean, if there isn't but trash, it's unlikely to be to be high. And and as Mr. Bashnik said, if there are vents that probably have some sort of activated carbon, you know, columns there or something, which I'm guessing they would. It's probably not a problem, but but it can be measured if we have to, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I think back to years ago commuting on Route One through Linden when the coffee company was there. And, you know, there was an odor there that you could that was apparent from quite a distance on either side of it. But you know, I don't know. How far do you go with this?
And I I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bach, his testimony was that the cooking currently, you know, happens in the existing building and it's going to remain in that building. So it's not. And if it move, you know, if it expands into the new space, they'll have to take the necessary steps to to properly vent it, mitigate odors. And obviously, the I the township ordinance has zoning ordinance has performance standards with respect to to odor. You know, so that could be enforced if it became a problem.
I agree with counsel that it's an enforcement issue.
I agree. I agree with that, too.
Well, you know, my hope would be that the only odor that they smell is delicious soup and that they actually like it.
Be good advertising then, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Or does someone want to add a rest? Start with a resolution incorporating some of Mr. Shepherd's suggestions? Okay, I would like to make a motion. We approve DPA 1500018 with the following conditions. One, that the metal panels match the existing freezer panels around the whole the whole building. Hold on, let me check your notes. Unless anybody has anything else, that's all I have.
I think the additional ones would be compliance with CME's review memo and and Mark Healy's memo.
Okay, we'll add that in there, too.
Yep.
Okay, sir. Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Earl Batia?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Robert, Gary Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Dean Verda?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's attention to this matter. I think the board did a tremendous job in ferreting out any questions that that the applicant needed to answer. So I do appreciate that. And I hope everyone has a nice summer.
I would just like to thank everyone, too, for your time and attention. It's it's a pleasure to come before this board. You ask really good questions and hopefully, you know, it's generational. My boys work for me. So hopefully, I'll be here, you know, for a very long time.
And maybe the next time I appear, you'll see me. If anybody wants to see me.
True.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye. Okay, I just wanted to make one comment to the board. I believe the next meeting, August 5th, is devoted mainly to the House of worship on South Middle Bush Road, which is the application that will remain virtual because it's already been advertised. So there there could be a remote possibility of approaching finishing it and even maybe voting. So if anybody needs to catch up on missed meetings or listening or watching the reading, the listening to the tapes or whatever, see Christine and make make those arrangements. That'll be the next meeting. I think that's that's the only thing on the agenda. Is that correct, Christine? If it's not, it's the major
No, I don't think it's the only thing. I think we have Brent. Is it Brent? I don't want to say the wrong name. I don't think it's the only thing, but there's there's just some
The buses, I think, on the
Pardon me?
I think you have the buzzer.
All right, the bus, the bus company may be also, but the the House of Worship is the is the main thing.
The main attraction, yeah.
It can be coming to a conclusion. So if you need to brush up on past meetings that were missed, please try and take care of that so we can have everybody possible eligible to vote. Otherwise, if there's no other business, we'll adjourn the meeting and hope everyone has a nice weekend and see you next time.
Thank you again. Good night. Good night.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.
All right.